I'm here, yeah.
Counselor Foster?
Go Stars.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Here.
And Mayor Becker will not be present this evening.
Modifications to agenda.
Yes, Mayor Protem, we have several modifications to the agenda tonight. The first being L2. We would like to add consideration of the Alcon Construction Proposal.
Where?
We would like to remove M. There will not be a financial report this evening. And we'd also like to remove N2, 3, and 4. We will not be receiving staff reports from City Council, the city, or, excuse me, City Attorney, City Clerk, and the Public Works.
Oh, shoot.
I don't know how to respond to that.
I think you should ask for your money back.
I, I so move according to the, um, amend.
Modifications to the agenda.
Modifications to the agenda, thank you, Counselor.
Second.
All right.
Kind of lost it there.
Second tip. Spent too much time talking with you, Counselor.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye. All right. Approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting, September 3, 2020, as review on approval of accounts payable.
I move to approve the minutes and the consent, or approve the consent agenda, including the minutes and counts payable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, senior members?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Proclamations, communications, and appointments. National Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month proclamation.
So does he need to read that?
Should I just read that, Mr. Mayor Protem, or if you'd like me to read it, I can, I'll be happy to do that.
I don't know if I can see here. I don't think I have it.
Do you want me to read that?
Yes, yes.
I'll just read that. It's proclamation of Valley White Health Systems Inc., hashtag Be The One To Ask. Keep them safe, be there, help them connect, follow up. This is proclamation for National Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month. Whereas September 2020 is Suicide Prevention Recovery Month, when millions of people around the world join your voices to share a message of hope and healing, and whereas these observances are united and raise awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people recover, and whereas in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are more needed than ever, and whereas residents should be able to access high-quality prevention, support rehabilitation, and treatment services that lead to recovery and healthy lifestyle, and whereas every day, people enter treatment into behavioral health services and community supports, begin their route to wellness and recovery, and whereas resiliency begins early in life within families, daycare, and schools, and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan, and whereas recovery and wellness encompasses the whole individual, including mind, body, spirit, and community, and whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts, and loss, and substance use are significantly valuable to individuals, families, and our communities at large, and whereas it is essential that we educate residents about suicide, mental health, and substance use problems, and the ways they affect all people in the community, and whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, coworkers, and providers to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate services and supports, and whereas Suicide Convention Week and Recovery Month aspires millions of Americans to raise awareness, build resiliency, and find hope. See resources at HTTPS, www.betheoneto.com/pabout. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Protem Sagala, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Suicide Prevention Recovery Month. Be the one to ask, keep them safe, be there, help them connect, and follow up.
Good job.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah. Actually, I was gonna say something about that. Just to interject about suicide prevention. I'm on a couple of different committees that work to that end of Suicide Prevention Task Force is one of them with Rio Grande Prevention Partner. And it's, it's, it's an easy situation to ignore. Maybe that's a little strong, that easy to, it's easily not taken seriously. And this is a serious issue. I work with two groups that seem to be targeted with this issue of suicide, and that's the veterans community and teenagers. And both tragic. And there's a lot behind it. I just wanted to emphasize that. I stand behind this whole idea of this proclaiming the month, but it's, it's really a lifetime commitment. It's something we should, we should all be looking into. If you're interested in being involved in any kind of community awareness and improvement, this would be a source here to select, and I would certainly be available if anybody who's wanted some more information about that. It's, it's a problem more so here in the valley than a lot of other places. And that's kind of sad, but it's, it's a real thing, and I just wanted to emphasize that part of it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to emphasize on that? All right. Citizen comments, special presentations. Scheduled appearances in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file the appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Is there anybody? Marco?
Is there anybody, Marco? Hello, everybody. Good to be here. Good to see all these happy faces. Hey, it's a great day. I just wanna, I am totally stoked about our theater opening this weekend. Hallelujah. I mean, I am just, woo-hoo!
Right.
You know, that, that is a big plus for us, and we're gonna get moving again, and maybe it's just gonna be the little thing that gets the rest and everything else going. Uh, the city cleanup, wow. With that snowstorm and all the limbs and everything, Rob and his crew are doing a super fine job. And I just, I was even gonna tell him that personally, and he isn't here, but he's probably busy. But, and then the other thing I had, and I know you're gonna get tired of hearing me, but I will say it each time, the Diesel Place is still status quo and nothing has changed. Trash is still piled up. Maybe the 30 days aren't up yet, but I just thought I'd point that out. And otherwise, things are going good. And people seem to be, you know what I find in town? People are very respectful of, with the virus. They, they respect your distancing, the masks, the, you know, they're, they're just respectful of each other, and I see that in grocery stores and other stores, and I think our community is really good at that. And, Mr. Chief, thank you. You are outstanding. Have to tell you, have to talk about you. He stopped by my house with a snow shovel. And helped shovel the snow because it was so heavy after that snow. What chief does that? I mean, this is just, it just really touched me. We got a good group of people here. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will second that. Public meetings, liquor, licenses, renewals, resolutions, ordinances. Ordinance 905, an ordinance revising the City of Montevista zoning ordinances, permitting microhome or tiny house structures, and providing further definition on accessory dwelling units.
Did you hear any counselors? So, um, City of Montevista has this great ordinance that we passed previously, ordinance number 878, which created an opportunity for a number of different things. We call it the microhome or tiny house structures ordinance at the time. When we passed this, tiny homes was all the rage. It's all super cool stuff, I guess, and, but the practical side of it for the community was allow a smaller housing footprint. So there was two opportunities to do that primarily. One was have an accessory dwelling unit on an existing lot that already had a house. It provides for a maximum amount of lot coverage, those kind of things. It's fairly well restricted. The second part of that is if you have a, a lot you want to build a house on, we have minimum, uh, house sizes. Many communities do, but they're designed, you know, I see most of the zoning ordinances that have that were designed some time back. So, for instance, in residential, um, low density, the minimum house size is 900 square feet currently. In 2009, they made it 1,200 square feet. I live in residential low density, and I guarantee you my house is not even 1,000 square feet, and most of my neighbors aren't either. They're all built at the same time in the 60s. So essentially, inadvertently, the city created a problem where the house that you had wasn't grandfathered. Well, it was grandfathered, but if it burnt down, you had to build a larger house. Really pretty silly, my, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking of it. So when we passed 878, we also said, hey, you know, we're gonna go back to the previous house sizes, which was like the 900 residential lot. That was the minimum. But ordinance 878 also allowed for a one-unit dwelling to be proposed, a new one, standalone on a lot that was smaller. So you only wanted to build, yeah, 7,000 square foot lot, you only wanted to build an 800 square foot house, go to the planning commission, do a special review use application. Shouldn't really be an issue, but before you couldn't ask for that, you could ask for a variance, which unless the lot was too small to build on, you wouldn't get a variance for that. So we solved all that, we thought, pretty nicely. And then we had a, a hearing with the planning commission for accessory dwelling unit, which they did vote to approve, and which the city council subsequently approved. But there was a large debate with the planning commission members at the time about whether it was an accessory dwelling unit or it was a one-unit dwelling. So, hmm, didn't really agree with it. It was a circular logic argument. It didn't really matter if it was a one-unit dwelling or an ADU, because either one's allowed to be modified in size. But nevertheless, they approved it, that was great, but I went back to drawing board and said, this is the same planning commission that originally provided ordinance 878 recommendation approval to city council. So it was a little ironic, perhaps. Long story short, redrafted a little bit, you can see in your ordinance 905 draft, this will be first reading tonight, takes two readings to be successful, there are some highlighted, um, sections. In section one, we added an ADU may only be placed on a property zone lot where there is already a principal one-unit dwelling, which logic dictates that since it's an accessory use, that there would be a primary use, but nevertheless, we thought we would like to clarify this. ADUs are not considered one-unit dwellings. Ah, so then we no longer have a 40-minute circular discussion about whether it's an ADU or one-unit dwelling. ADUs are not considered one-unit dwellings, they can only be constructed as an incidental unit of the primary dwelling unit. Pretty simple. In dwelling one unit, the term one-unit dwelling shall not include a mobile home, manufactured home, unless said manufactured home is on a permanent foundation, and they explain that, that under our code, there are zones that you cannot put a manufactured home unless it's on a permanent foundation. Okay? Because if it's a manufactured home that's just on blocks, that's not actually considered real estate. It's still, at that point, a trailer licensed by the state of Colorado. Okay? You put it on a permanent foundation, according to every lender in the planet, then it's a permanent dwelling unit. So, um, and then I also added that a dwelling one unit is not an ADU. And then there was something at the end of that on page two in section one, where it says, "A dwelling unit may be categorized per the International Building Code as either Group R1, R2, or R3. More specific regulations or dwellings can be found in the International Residential Code." Well, uh, we don't actually cover the International Residential Code. We have contract with the county who provides the building inspection under those codes, and we don't have, I'm not quite sure how we got that in the original one, R1, R2, R3. We don't use those zoning classifications. Yes, the rest of the world does, but we don't, so. In any case, so we just struck that because it's like, well, we don't use those. There are other places to use it, but primarily people use R1, R2, R3, but, you know, I don't think it matters other than we reference those, so I sought to strike those. So basically, those are the only changes to the ordinance that this ordinance would bring forth. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Clear. So I move to approve ordinance 905 on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I think it'll help to clarify this. And I'm sorry if I'm speaking really quickly tonight. I might be overly caffeinated, or it's just been a day, or a week, or a month, whichever it is. So if I am going too fast, let me go. All right.
All right. Contracts, agreements, and leases.
Okay, here I am. Okay, so this one's fun, you're like, what the heck is this? An MOU for the distribution of CARES Act funds. Well, you gotta admit that the county attorney went to an extensive length to make a very long document that says, what does it say? Well, so Rio Grande County got some CARES Act funds. You might recall that you, the city council, said, yes, if you're gonna administer them, we'd like to participate with them. We signed a little short MOU, it was like a one-pager. Apparently, that was insufficient to memorialize this issue. So now you have this fairly ginormous MOU, but, uh, you know, has lots of good legal stuff in it, but basically, what it says is that we can, by signing this, send a big old giant invoice over to Rio Grande County for costs that we incurred due to COVID. And when COVID began, our finance director instituted a code that went with our billing so that COVID-specific items and costs could be recorded. So she can pull up a report, and it's somewhere around $55,000 at the moment of unanticipated revenue. Right. We had expenses that were unanticipated, but we were able to cover those, but now we have to get the revenue back, so even better. So that will help our financial position. Without going through all the gobbledygook in here, it's all good legal stuff, I don't think the city attorney saw any problems with it.
I would've had about two pages of them.
Right, right. I thought you would, but.
Hang on, we're good.
So staff would recommend that you approve, um, the mayor Protem to sign this document this evening, and then we can send the bill off to the county here shortly and get some money back.
All right. Motion to approve the MOU for distribution of CARES Act funds and have the mayor Protem get signed.
Second.
You can decide something, I do.
It's been moved and seconded. If you have any other questions? Nope, doesn't look like it.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We'll give that to you, Mayor Protem.
And we added L2, consideration of Alcon Construction Proposal.
All right, so this evening on the deus, um, on your desktop, you have a proposal from Alcon Construction Inc., general contractors, regarding Sky High project, the amount of So, um, we just got this yesterday, by the way. And, um, I'm actually, while I understand on this project, the time may be of the essence. We have some concerns at this point of, you know, we had a meeting with contractors on Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you. And we had some discussion with them, and they brought this up at the meeting, we hadn't seen it before, and we, we want more detail. We've kind of approved some, you know, of these proposals, and had a pretty good idea of A plus B equals C product, and pretty comfortable with that, and that's fine, and this is not anything other than saying that we need some more information before we'd recommend that the council approve this. For instance, what does item A mean to the project? Right? What component of the masonry that says Mason, 467,500? So what exactly do we get for $467,000? It fits within the overall general budget that we've been given, but it's not the total price, so, you know, where does that fit in, in the timeline of construction progress, all these other things? I have a fairly good level of experience of managing construction projects, and after looking at that and, you know, talking with our finance director, we both have a few, we want some more detail for the council, because the additional 1.45 million puts us in the 3.647, 3,647,000 dollar price of the contract to date. And, you know, we're a little shy of the 8.6 million dollars this is gonna take, so we would like to be able to take a breath and look at this and give you some more detailed information before you make a decision to sign off on this next piece. So staff's recommendation on this this evening would be to table this item until the next council meeting, so we can provide you with more detail.
Where are we, where's Sky High at at this? Your statement was, you know, the financing is still short of the 8.6 million. I know that there were several foundation grants, Gates Foundation, et cetera, that they were applying for, that they would not know until about this timeframe. Do, where are they at? How much, I mean, do you know where, where are they at, and what's the future looking like?
So that is an excellent question, Counselor, and that is part of our question about moving forward, because we do not know what these foundations have responded to. We haven't had any indication that there's yea or nays with them, and so this is a little bit of our, we'd say, due diligence of saying, you know, we know where the first $2 million is, and we kind of know where the last $3 million is. But this part in the middle, and we're starting to get into the part of the middle of the funding, if you will. Right? Because the city's $2 million obligation is last in, right? DOLAs is right before ours, and DOLAs requires all the funds to be raised before they release their funds. So that's 3 million on the tail end, that's great. We know about maybe 2 point, that I'm aware of, that the city's aware of, of about 2.4, 2.5 million dollars. So there's that hole in the middle there, and that, we don't know the answer for you tonight, and that's also part of the information we want to be able to bring to you, because we, as well heard, we would know this sometime in September. Well, if it gets into October, there's kind of a question about, do you spend another 1.4 or 5 million dollars right now? So we're concerned about that, and we don't know the answers.
Is this over and above the bid they gave for DOLAs?
No, no, it's not, Counselor.
This is part of?
It fits into the global 8.6 million dollar number. Global.
Okay, so they're not asking for any more?
No, it would be like, it would be in a normal progression of construction to a point, but, I mean, obviously, the project's committed, and the building's tore down, and we did the pad, and we've done concrete, but I look at this and I start to see vertical. And vertical starts getting into that $3 million that we don't know the answer on. So it's probably a good time to take a pause and find out. So, and there are some budget issues remaining to be solved, not just from the financing side, but understanding some of the bids that Alcon's received, that we would like to analyze a little bit further based on the pricing that we kind of don't understand, to put it kindly.
So does this 1.2, 1.4, excuse me, does that put them over what they have currently, does that put them over what they have raised? Does that put Sky High over what they have currently raised?
That's the question. That is one of the questions. Yeah, so that's one of the questions, that's that side of the question, right, of are there adequate funds to cover that currently? Right? It may not. It may be really close. Right? 3 points, you know, 3.46 million dollars, you start to go, hmm, we know, we know about 2.4, that's what the city knows. Maybe there's another million dollars in there, but I had asked for assurity on that, if you will, and haven't received a response yet, so once again, that's why we're asking you to table it, so we know what we're dealing with, both on the finance side, if you will, and on the construction side, what does it look like if this takes place?
Okay.
Sorry.
So, you know, we're just trying to dot the Ts, cross the Is, and, you know.
So if I understand, is the potential downside of this, if I'm understanding this correctly, is that if we said, yeah, we're gonna do this 1.4, and then friends of Sky High say, oh, so I'm sorry, we came up a little short, we're on the hook for the balance, is that how I interpret?
Because, yes, sir, because, because who are you authorizing to sign the proposal? The project manager, which is me, which ultimately, all these invoices, the city is on the hook for.
Right.
And, yeah, so you can maybe understand our.
I understand reluctance, yeah, no, I was just making sure I understood reluctance.
Right, we're the ones assigned on the bottom line here, so yes, we would be liable for the, and we're not seeing anything other than we don't have the information, and in my past history doing construction projects, that makes me lose sleep. So we would like you to be assured, the public to be assured, that we're keeping a close eye on this, because I think we are, but till we have those answers, and I would say by the next council meeting, we should be able to give you a solid answer.
I agree with you. There is, I've had some experience with this, and on a much smaller level, with residential construction financing, and I'm used to seeing, this is basically a draw here, and I'm used to seeing a lot more detail, specifically from the vendor or supplier, like with the masonry. Let's, I, it's not Alcon Construction providing that, it's coming from.
Correct.
Some other supplier in some detail, and I've seen that on some of these others, and I, and we, I talked to you about this a little bit, but, yeah, that some of that is explainable, but in, at this point, there's definitely some, some specifics that need to be covered. I'd be in favor of tabling it. Somebody else wants to make a motion, or I will.
Go for it, you're, you're up.
I move to table the proposal from Alcon Construction in the interest of gaining more specificity.
Or greater detail?
I got that. What he said, and, and clarification of the funding.
Second.
We moved in second to, any other discussion?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Motion carries to table the proposal from Alcon Construction until further detail is provided.
Thank you. Um, and actually, you know, financial reports were a hangover from last meeting's agenda. You, you heard, uh, our finance director's report last time, and stuff happens that it stuck on there, but, because we enjoy your PowerPoints, so.
And we just, and we just want to hang out with her.
Right, exactly.
It's all you, buddy.
I almost brought this puppet for him, but I didn't.
That'd been kind of fun, though.
Good to do that, yeah.
That'd be good. Could be fun. Okay, so.
Are you getting on us?
Just one picture.
Wow, yeah, that's, um, even an album master of puppets. If you could Google that one, it's probably before your time. Okay, so, only in 2020, that's how I started my report, could you have a snowstorm of that magnitude in September.
Last time was nineteen sixty-four.
Was it really?
Oh, wow.
Wow.
That was a good year. Well, you wouldn't know.
Any, in any case, uh, you know, Public Works did a great job, so did the police department, um, you know, and city staff, and, you know, it was a little hectic and crazy, and we now have our second, um, giant pile of limbs of Sky High since I've worked here, it's quite magnificent, so. Um, people can still take their limbs down there. My beautiful thing this morning, when I woke up and it got light enough to see my backyard, is part of one of my trees that was damaged, and I cleaned my whole yard and saw it and all that stuff, was that part of that tree decided it now needed to fall into the yard, so. I, at least I know what I'm doing, you know, Saturday, so. Um, we submitted our annual reports for the Enterprise Zone, and, um, you know, obviously, one of our Enterprise Zone projects is Sky High, and we've had, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars in Enterprise Zone qualified donations, which totals like four twelve something. And then, kind of in a cool thing, our other project is kind of the downtown, which includes the theater, so our generous benefactors, um, that counted towards that program, which so not only helped the theater out, but it helped us sustain that program financially, because, not that we get money for it, but we get credit for having got the money for it, so thank you Theater for that, and the SCAPs, of course. Um, but it's kind of a, a nice thing, because if you don't collect money for it, and actually, last year we did, but if you don't collect money for two years, the state cuts you off, and you can't get tax credits for it anymore, so. That was cool, um, we had the one cent sales tax committee met, most of you were there, it was, um, interesting and fun, and, you know, there's some good conversations, and you will see the results, but basically, uh, we anticipate about, uh, four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in one cent tax going into a single one cent fund, which is what we promised the voters, the oversight committee got pitches from Police Department, Public Works, and, um, the city managers slash Sky High whatever office. So, uh, it was actually, uh, interesting, there was some really good, um, discussions about the future of the use of those funds. Lot of discussion with the police department, and, and about paving. This paving is an exciting topic. Okay. Um, the only other thing, you know, uh, as you all know, we've been talking about the fabulous opportunity to build a new wastewater treatment plant for the community. And, um, that's coming. You know, we thought we could put it off longer, and C D P H E acquired a new compliance officer to assign to our case, and he's not messing around. And apparently, they all think that's great. So we're working on a compliance program, which you all get to see, but it does mean sometime in the next four or five years, we will be building a new wastewater treatment plant. More to follow on that. It's unfortunate, it's expensive, but, um, I knew after I was here a couple of months, that C D P H E does not like lagoon systems. I asked them that, they said, no, that's not the case, but here we are, so. Anyway, uh, let's see, one other note that wasn't in my report. Planning Commission Chairman Donald Rowland has resigned from the Monavista Planning and Zoning Commission effective September fourth. So, he resigned from that commission, we have put out an ad, um, to see if we can entice anybody else to be on that. Uh, it is an important commission of the city because, not only is it a planning commission, but it's the Board of Adjustments. Now, you all are gonna have a fabulous opportunity to, uh, hear a, um, I'm trying to remember, is it a minor subdivision? Yeah, so, we have a minor subdivision, and it's a minor one, and it's not super complicated, but one of the other planning commissioners' son works for one of the owners, so she can't be on the hearing, so, uh, that leaves us, we have two planning commissioners, one can't do it, you know. So, you all actually, at your mid-October meeting, will get to be the hearing board for that. So, heads up, it's lots of fun, and I should do a real public hearing and all that stuff, and it's a simple one, it's not like a mega subdivision thing or anything, but even if it was, it'll be fun, so. I promise we will bring Kool-Aid or something. All right, that is, uh, really all I have for this evening. I don't know if you have any questions for me, otherwise, I will yield the floor to our esteemed police chief.
Do we have any ballpark figures for what that wastewater treatment plant's gonna cost?
You don't want to know.
Would you like to hear that before Halloween? Yes, okay. Seventeen to twenty million dollars.
Is it in the woods, or?
Uh, part, partially, it's, it's called a mechanical treatment plant, it treats the stuff different, we have a, a, a lagoon plant. So it goes in a big lagoon, it settles, it goes to the next lagoon, and so on and so forth. But what that won't do is meet the new metals standards that they've decided that the world can't do without. Um, so a mechanical plant is kind of like our veterans' plant, although our veterans is a hybrid, partially mechanical plant. So like, we didn't finish it, and it's not big enough for the city, hold on to the story, don't know why that happened that way, but, uh, yeah. So it's seventeen to twenty million dollars, give or take. Um, we probably, so it's not as scary as that sounds, at least fifty percent of that can be a grant. Um, and there's some other funding sources, but we're gonna be in at least seven to ten million dollars. On a good day.
And you got how long to get this done?
Well, it will be in, I will, I will say roughly, because we haven't submitted our first new plan to them, roughly, we'll be on construction within four years. And while we're gonna be talking about that, we'll also be talking about the water tank that we need. Because we do need one of those, and we'll get into the depth of why we need that. But it is important for the growth of our community, and firefighting particularly. It's not so much that we cannot provide adequate water and flow to our average, everyday customers, um, but does anyone remember Lahara, was that a year ago, two years ago?
It was like five years ago.
Is it that long? Really? Wow, I've been here, it's like, time goes by so fast. The town of Lahara, they had a fire that engulfed most of a block, and they ran their water system dry, and they had fire departments, volunteers from all over the place bringing them water, and farmers doing wells, and all this crazy stuff, and it was great, they, they got lucky. But, uh, we currently cannot provide that kind of fire flow. Best practice says that we should have some kind of water tank, and, and, you know, while we have backup generators and a big, long power outage, um, you know, what's up in the air in a tank flows really nicely. So. There we go, there's a pleasant topic, sorry, a little out with that, but, but, you know, we've, we've danced around that for, I don't know, a while. But anyway. All right, thank you.
Thank you, boys.
King Mayor Protem and counselors? This is gonna be short.
Because I don't really have a lot, thank goodness, we don't really have a lot going on. Uh, you've got a copy of my report, um, our incidents continue to be down, um, we're about a hundred down from last year at the same time, so. Uh, and that's kind of been the trend all year, I don't know if it's COVID or what, but, um, our, uh, total incidence, although this month was, August was a little bit higher, we're kind of creeping back up to where I guess normal would be, up around a thousand, and we were right at nine hundred incidents, uh, calls for service and stuff like that, so, uh. Uh, the only big significant thing, I think you've all seen that, we have a, there's a person that's been missing, so we've been actively investigating that, um. Unfortunately, almost has a, uh, a missing person too, without going into any details, but we've been, I, I, one of the things I really wanted to get established is, is working together as departments, um, across the valley, so, uh, we've been actively working with Alamos, and we're starting to do that a lot more with, uh, other investigations too. Kind of combining resources, you know, we're both smaller departments, although we're the two of the bigger departments in the valley, so we're, we're trying to combine resources, especially like our investigations and and working with their investigators, and, and we have somebody that we don't, we'll work, we'll pull off the road from patrol and, and put him into investigations, and, uh, it's just, it, it works really well, um, like, for this investigation, it's worked really well, um, to combine those resources to, um, so that we're not sucking it all up, and, and combined, we're able to get a lot more done a lot quicker, so, I'll just leave it at that. Administratively, uh, Officer Quintero, she's doing outstanding on F T O, um, uh, somewhat so that, uh, you know, I don't want to jinx her, but, uh, hopefully she'll actually finish it ahead of time, because, uh, she's really sharp, uh, so. Uh, we were pleased to, uh, uh, how well that she's doing, and, uh, um, pleased that we were able to actually steal her from Solatch, I know Sheriff Warwick's still mad at me, but, um, he'll get over it, we're good for it, so. Uh, Officer Golden, we are sending him to S R O school in, uh, Highlands Ranch in October, so he'll officially, S R O's the School Resource Officer, so we're gonna get him officially trained as a School Resource Officer, um. Uh, we've been, uh, catching up on some of our training that was, was canceled during the whole COVID thing, so we've got some good free local training that we bring in through the, um, post grant, through the San Luis Valley Training Foundation, so we take advantage of that, so we're not having to send people out of the valley. And I've got to tell you that the Training Foundation brings in some of the top-notch law enforcement training across this country, uh, the, the training that they, it's supervisor training, the guy that was training it was the retired chief out of, uh, Raleigh, North Carolina. So, I, I mean, that's just the quality of type of training that we're getting on that. And then, I've made all the supervisors, and myself included, we went through some S R S A training, some law enforcement, uh, updates on the current legislation and stuff, so that's been, uh, uh, it, it was good information, and, and especially as supervision, to have that, um, especially with S R S A being our attorneys and stuff, or our attorneys, our insurance company, um, so that we're in compliance with them, so that's kind of good. And then last, starting next month, because we are caught up on training, we've got all of our mandatory training done, we're gonna start using our overlap days to do some more, uh, I guess, targeted traffic enforcement, um, and then some, you know, criminal activity enforcement, um, not going to be detailed, so we'll, we'll have a lot more officers on, on our overlap days, and, and be able to like, instead of just going call the call the call, uh, which, you know, I have one or two officers on, that's all they really do, is end up doing reactive versus proactive, this will give us an opportunity to, uh, to do some proactive, uh, first, traffic, uh, the distracted driving, I want to report on that. I'm gonna, hopefully, right after the first year, be able to get a grant specifically for, uh, for, um, through C dot, for, um, distracted driving, so, um, so hopefully, we'll be able to, um, target some of that, as, as you brought up, uh, Mayor Protem. So other than that, that's about all I've got, unless you guys have questions.
Good job.
All right. Keep it short.
All right, so council committee, city commission, and council reports. We can, uh, start over here again?
Sure, I, I really have a lot, I mean, a lot of what has been going on has been discussed, uh, in our, in our meeting here, so it's been very informative. I will just mention one thing, Neighborhood Watch is on schedule, is that right, Chief? That's, uh, that's coming up in a few days, uh, that's the third Monday, the twenty-first, so, um, six P M. at the, uh, at the chamber. So, uh, the last meeting was, uh, was really well attended, which, and we ended up with a lot of information, a lot of good exchange and interaction, so, uh, yeah, encourage, I don't know how quickly this, this webcast goes out. They're gonna get this by Monday, so, yeah, y'all, y'all watching this, uh, it's, uh, yeah, Monday evening. Be out at, uh, the, uh, hey, come on, I spent eighteen years in Texas, give me a break. And, yeah, and then chose Colorado, yeah, go figure.
It's an easy choice.
But it's, but Neighborhood Watch, six P M. Monday, and, uh, you'll, yeah, the town, and, and y'all will benefit from it.
Yeah, the only comment, question I've got is regarding the railroad crossing signal at one sixty, and I assume that that is the railroad's responsibility? Okay, because about three weeks ago, it was going off on its own. And then they, yeah, it was pretty funny, we'd watch traffic get backed up, and we'd, because the Chamber of Commerce have orchestrating it. Yeah, um, and they sent a bunch of people out there to work on it, now it doesn't work at all.
Is it the gate that keeps dropping?
Yeah, the gates, the signals, you know, the train, the train comes through, and it just sits there and looks at the train as it drives by.
Do the lights flash?
No.
Oh.
The lights don't flash, the gate doesn't go down.
Wow.
Nothing, and I don't know if we need to mention that, or.
Yeah, we'll call somebody.
Yeah, there's, there's a phone number right there.
I, I noticed that they were out there working on it, two or three days ago, I believe.
I saw some people, but.
Yeah, the, I saw a railroad out there working on it. I know that you, I'm trying to remember if it was yesterday, I don't think it was working yesterday.
Yeah.
It may have been two, it may have been two days ago, it may have been Tuesday when it was not working, but it's been, 'cause I don't, I didn't see, I know I didn't see any trains go by today, I think it was yesterday that it was not working, still. Okay. Oh, my shop's right there, so I have a good eye on it, so I'll look at it again next time I hear a train go by, but.
Trains go through.
Yeah, you know, the little guy gets out there with his flag and tries to stop traffic, but he's not very successful, I think. That's the only thing I've.
I feel sorry for that little guy.
That's all I've got.
Uh, yeah, I want to, uh, about, Gary was talking about Neighborhood Watch. If for some reason you cannot make it, our police department does have its own YouTube television sort of thing. M V P D T V, is that not catchy?
That is great.
So you can go and watch the Neighborhood Watch meetings there. And find, and find it on there, so I just want people to know that, so you don't. Some, some people have children, some people work, they just can't make it to the Neighborhood Watch meeting, but it's good information to have, there's always a lot of good information to have. I want to remind, uh, everybody that tomorrow is the last day for the Monavista Farmers Market, from nine to one. So if you haven't made it this year, you need to get out there, or you're gonna miss it. If you have made it every week, you need to get out there and tell them you're gonna miss them. When we go away. Uh, other than that, just, uh, as I go around town, and I know a lot of you know that I do that a lot, I spend a lot of time, go out of town, just listening and talking to people, uh, there is an excitement, there's an undercurrent of excitement. And I'm not sure exactly where it's all coming from, I know some of the sources, um, I know some of the people, but there is just an undercurrent of excitement that Monavista was on a cusp of growth before COVID yet, and I think we have decided that COVID or no COVID, we're gonna get back to that cusp again. I, I think that it's just been a collective decision, I don't think it's been planned or organized necessarily citywide, but there are a lot of people that have a very positive outlook, and are ready to start working on getting some more businesses in here, getting some more revenue. getting some more revenue going, which obviously, we're going to need soon. So I would like to encourage any of you, if you know business owners, or if you can think of a niche that we, Mona Vista doesn't build yet, let's try to find it, let's try to recruit some people, recruit some businesses. And we can do that on our own, we don't have to, that doesn't have to go through a group, it doesn't have to go through a city planner, it doesn't have to, you can recruit businesses all by yourself, so I encourage you to do that. And that's about all, Ken?
So. I, you know, living in Mona Vista, you drive through town, you go past by the parks, you pass by over here, and you see this park being used pretty actively, people walking around the park. Walk in, or going by the skate park, you see all these kids, gee, I don't know how many kids are over there on a daily basis, but there's a ton. And, and, you know, like, we've been actively trying to get people to come into the city, and to spend time in the city, and to spend money here in the city, and something that really kind of caught my eye was, when I passed these parks, I saw a picnic table that had four people on it, five people on it, saw 20 other people, or 10, 15 other people walking through the park, and I started thinking about a story that really kind of made me think about who I want here. So the story is of a big man, okay, a big man, and we all claim this man to be our friend, and we constantly ask him to come over, right, everybody's like, hey, why don't you come over? Why don't you come over, why don't you come over? But he comes over, and he walks in, and he looks around, and he says, you know what? I think I'm gonna go, I think I'm gonna go. And they're like, oh, really, you just go out here, and he's like, yeah, it's all right, but I got somewhere to go. So he takes off, and he leaves. And they get together, they're, they're asking, why doesn't he stay? Why doesn't he stick around? So somebody ends up talking to him one day, and you know what he says? He goes, I'm a big man, he goes, and people say they want me there, but when I go there, there's no place for me to sit. So I, he looks around, he goes, that chair's not gonna hold me, and that chair's not gonna hold me. So he, he's like, man, I can't stay here, I have to go. So I'm kind of wondering how many more picnic tables we can put out in the parks?
I've been thinking about that, too.
Because maybe trash cans, whatever, whatever we need to do, you know, because I'm looking at these picnic tables out there, and they're all filled up, you know, and I'm like, man, I wonder how many picnic tables we can fill up with all these people, because people are driving through, and even me sometimes, you know, like, when I'm driving through, like, my kids love going to the parks, but sometimes I don't like to go to the park, because sometimes people sit there, be like, oh, there's Victor, I'm gonna go talk to him, and there goes an hour, you know? So like, sometimes I pass by the park, and I'm like, is there a place to sit? You know, and I look, and I go, there's not a place to sit. So sometimes I don't let my kids go to the park, because, you know, there's not a place to sit, you know? So just wanted to kind of throw that out there. And then too, this suicide thing is, is a big deal, you know? We're getting into a time in this, in our, I don't know what you'd say, this life, I guess, where the value of life has been diminished, you know, and people don't really look at the value of life the way they should look at it. I have friends that have taken their own lives because they didn't want to go back to jail, what I mean, for an extra two years. It's been 10 years since it happened, and they could have been free already for four, five, six, you know? I've also been fortunate enough to help save lives without knowing it, and just because I picked up the phone, you know, just because I picked up the phone and called this person that just randomly popped in my head, oh, hmm, how's it going, how you been? Five years later, man, I was gonna kill myself if you didn't show up at my house, you know, I'm like, really? Oh, that's crazy, you know, and we, we just need to get out of our bubble, you know? Our bubbles are, are blinding us from people out there that really need some help, you know, so. Be attentive, attentive to people, because people are hurting and struggling more than what we know. There's some people that joke around and say, you know, stay, why don't you come over? Or certain things, you know, just because I had a friend that asked one of my other friends, why don't you stay? Why don't you just stay? It was already late, and he's like, no, I have to go home to my wife. He went home, my other friend hung himself. He's like, man, I should have stayed, man, I should have stayed, but he didn't know, you know, he didn't know, he didn't, they were, you know, and it's, and I was one of his best friends, so, you know, we just have to get out of our bubbles. People are important, so, I know that if it was my son, I would pay anything I possibly can to have him back. You know, it's priceless, and if somebody out there can be that bridge, you know, to keep my son, or to keep their relative, or somebody from going off the deep end, then by all means, let's help, so. You mean? So with all that, are we adjourned?
Adjourned until October 1st.
Yes, we will adjourn the meeting until October 1st.